Michelle is going to be joining us shortly. So I'm just going to start with some introductions and kind of introduce who is going to sit on the Tax Rate Committee, and I just want to thank them. I want to thank the Executive Director for, why did I just lose the name Nancy? Executive Director for the Springfield Chamber, Nancy Creed. Thank you for joining us and being so willing to join the committee again. And then we have our Freddie Lopez from Home Logic. Home Logic, I see that in the background, so I'm going to use that for you Freddie. And then Michelle Hyde, who is the Chair for the Bay Neighborhood Council, should be joining soon. She's trying to get in now. Um, well, I don't know what's happening there, but she will be joining us soon as part of the Tax Rate Committee. And of course, our regular committee, who Tim Allen is on our Finance Committee, and Adam Gomez also sits on the Finance Committee. So thank you all. And then I just want to go around the room really quickly and just introduce our guests. And Richie Allen, we'll start with you, and thank you so much for, or should I start with councilors? I'm not going to start with councilors, I'm going to do it my way. So I'm going to start with Richie, if you could just introduce yourself and.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm the Chairman of the Board of Assessors for the City of Springfield and live at 94 Pondue Drive in Springfield.
Thank you Richie, and I'm just going by how I see everyone on the screen. Counselor Letterman.
Hi, I'm Counselor Letterman, I live at 1090 Worthington Street.
Thank you. Chris Caputo.
Chris Caputo, Treasure Collector, 219 Abbott Street in Springfield.
Thank you. Nancy, did you want to say anything?
Well, I'm good, thank you for having me.
Thank you for joining. Mr. Matthew Fontaine.
Matthew Fontaine, 72 Caroline, Springfield.
Thank you. Pat Burns.
Hi, Pat Burns, City Comptroller, 90 Clement Street, Springfield.
Thank you.
Counselor Edwards, 20 Dexter Street.
Thank you. Tim Brown.
Tim Brown, City Budget Director, 263 Redland Street, Springfield.
Matthew, can you just tell us what department you work in?
Assessors.
Oh, Assessors, thank you. I don't think we met before. Lindsay Hackett.
Lindsay Hackett, Deputy CFO, AD Tammerack Drive in Springfield.
Thank you. Counselor Davila.
Counselor Victor Davila, 21 East Oliver Street, Springfield.
Patrick Greenlee, am I saying that right?
Close enough, Green Hall, so it's Patrick Green.
Green Hall, yeah, I'm sorry.
No worries, 235 State Street in Springfield, and I'm on the Board of Assessors.
Thank you, Patrick. I see Michelle just joined us, but I'll go to Counselor Gomez, who kept us all entertained.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, Adam Gomez, 46 Laurel Street in the Brightwood Section in Springfield.
Thank you.
Counselor Curran, 470 Karoo Street, Springfield.
Thank you, Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, Marcus Williams, Springfield City Council, Ward 5, 342A, Boston Road.
Thank you, TJ Plant.
TJ Plant, CFO, City of Springfield, 42 Garfield Street.
Thank you. Freddie, did you want to say anything?
No, thank you for having me again.
Thank you for joining us again. Counselor Fenton.
Michael Fenton, 210 Atwater Road in Springfield.
Thank you. Michelle Hyde. We're just introducing ourselves, Michelle, and just giving our addresses. Michelle, hi. Uh oh, we lost her. But we'll get her back. And last but not least, I saved our Council President for last because it's his birthday, and I wanted to say happy birthday to Council President Hearst. And so, definitely did that on purpose.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, and thank you to all the councilors who have sent well wishes, who have sent a happy birthday, congratulations. I don't know if it's a congratulations when you turn 42, but I appreciate it, so.
Every year is a congratulation in life, and we are blessed to have you. And Michelle, sorry, we lost you for a minute. You're welcome, Counselor Hearst. Happy birthday, Counselor, and Michelle Hyde, 127 Maynard Street. Thank you, Michelle. And we are joined by reporter Paul Tuthill, and of course, our very well-loved Brendan from Focus Springfield. Thank you for all that you guys do, and we're being joined by Peter Goonan. And so I'm going to just turn the show right over to Richie Allen for his presentation. And Brendan, can we share screens? Can we give Richie access to share screens?
Yes, screen sharing is turned on for everyone in this meeting.
Okay. So you see it at the bottom, Richie, it's green?
I do. Patrick will be activating that for us, so.
Okay.
I appreciate the courtesy, I thank you for remembering that.
You're welcome.
And so anyways, thank you all for participating. This is the annual process of setting tax rates. This is for fiscal year 2021, fiscal year that started July 1st. And just as a refresher, we bill quarterly in Springfield. So we've had preliminary tax bills due this past August 1st and November 1st. The process in which we're engaged now is, we'll lead, we'll conclude with the setting of tax rates for the bills that go out at the end of December. And those bills will indicate the entire tax for the entire year of fiscal '21. And they would, and the balance after any preliminary payments have been deducted, the balance will be payable in two installments due February 1st, 2021, and May 1st, 2021. So it's quarterly billing. So I wanted to talk about value, the market value in the City of Springfield. And assessors are primarily concerned with raising taxes through the assessing of property value at the full and fair cash value legal standard in Massachusetts, more commonly known as 100% fair market value. And we operate under the regulatory oversight and control of the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. We have to satisfy many requirements of the Department of Revenue. All cities and towns do, in order to get approval to proceed with the mailing of tax bills. So the, the good news is that the Department of Revenue is satisfied that we are in compliance with their statistical requirements for the fiscal '21 values. Those values are based on a value date of January 1st, 2020, nearly 11 months ago. And so that's the value date when everything in the city, for assessing purposes, kind of stands still and we take a snapshot of the fair market value of every piece of property as of that date. There's another date that's relevant, and that is June 30th, 2020. And that's the date that controls what we assess. If a building exists on June 30th that didn't exist on January 1st, we're responsible for assessing it as though it existed on January 1st. The market conditions of January 1st always obtain, but June 30th is the date for determining what improvements, meaning what buildings or, and yard improvements, et cetera, are eligible to be taxed. So, so as I indicated, the Department of Revenue certified our values as being in compliance. At the same time, they certified our new growth. And new growth, just as a reminder, that's any property which is being taxed for the first time, whether it's a brand-new house, a brand-new building, a commercial industrial building, you know, some kind of remodeling or renovation that's occurred within a house that has, that goes beyond a simple repair. And so all of those items, all of that value is, constitutes what we call new growth in real estate. We also have new growth in personal property. And personal property primarily is the utilities, the electric utility and gas utility, which are both now ever-source, but they're investments in wires, poles, conduits, gas meters, gas mains, all of that qualifies, when it's being taxed for the first time, it qualifies as new growth. So, so we've had a very good year for new growth. And the DOR has certified our new growth, which is about $6.7 million of tax dollars. So that, that was very good news. And I think the investment, I interpret as, as a vote of confidence on the part of businesses and on the part of homeowners in the City of Springfield. It's a, it's a very strong year for new growth. And when, when something is built, the theory is that that imposes a requirement or a need for, for service from the local government. And that's why any new construction, any new items that are being taxed for the first time is, is treated outside the 2.5% increase in the first year it's being taxed. So when you take new growth together with the 2.5% increase, our levy limit is actually about $228.5 million. Last year was, it was $216.3. And so we have a, you know, good news on raising additional levy to meet all the expenses and obligations of the city government. I want to note.
Can you repeat those two numbers again?
Sure.
Okay.
So this year, and speaking in round numbers, this year it's $228.5 million is our levy limit. And last year, the levy limit was $216.3. Okay. So I do want to point out that this year would represent only the third year of the last 10 fiscal years in which we have not had a collision with the levy ceiling. I think we're all familiar with what's happening in the residential market in Springfield. The price appreciation is very strong, and it's even accelerated contrary to a lot of the expectations of the last nine months. It's even, you know, it's accelerated during the pandemic. And a lot of that is simply due to the very small amount of inventory on the market. It's historically low amounts of houses for sale. So, but all of that together with some investments in the commercial industrial sectors and personal property has resulted in our levy ceiling climbing to $235 million. So we don't have a problem with the levy ceiling this year. And again, this is only the third year out of the last 10 where that's been the case. We typically have a collision with the levy ceiling and the levy limit. So I think that that's very encouraging, very positive news for the city. So those are my kind of highlights. I, I would happily move along to the documents to be displayed at this point to get a little more granular, a little more specific to neighborhoods and the impact, unless anyone has any.
Yeah, let's see, does anyone have any questions first? And then if not, we can just move on.
Okay.
Wait, I see one hand raised. Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Richie, thank you for that good presentation. Just if you could just give us, just kind of refresh our memories real quick. You mentioned tax levy versus, tax levy, excuse me, tax levy limit versus levy, levies ceiling. Can you tell us quickly the difference?
Sure. Thank you, Counselor. So the levy ceiling is simply one number. It is 2.5% of the total taxable value in the community of all classes added together. And when you, when you've done that math, you simply take the 2.5% of that total value. So a $235 million ceiling represents 2.5% of its $9.7 billion, if I'm not mistaken. So it's, that's the levy ceiling. The levy ceiling rises and falls with the market. So, and it's really kind of independent, if you will, of the, of the levy limit. However, when they clash, the levy ceiling controls. So the levy limit, it's an annual calculation, and we take the previous year's levy limit, and we add 2.5% of that, and then we add new growth. And once we've done that, we add that to get to the $228.5 million. So that's, you know, the, the new growth this year is about 6.7, and the 2.5% is a little over 5.3, if I'm not mistaken.
Even if we had like new growth, if I'm correct, of more than the 2.5%, we can only go up to the ceiling, correct? But if we had, let's say, 10 million of new growth, we could only, still only go up to the ceiling, correct?
That's correct. And we've lost enormous amounts of new growth levy over the years because of the ceiling. A moment ago, I mentioned how we've had the collision between the limit and the ceiling, really seven of the last 10 years. And when that happens, that, that new growth levy is, vanishes for that year.
Richie, could you tell briefly, that's my final question, where of the new growth has happened in this city?
Sure. So there's a couple of major projects in the real estate sector, commercial and industrial. So we've got the Big Y Warehouse, which is over, you know, 200,000 square feet of new building on Roosevelt Avenue. We also have at the Chinese Railway Facility, that's on a tax increment financing arrangement. And more of, we're now at the year four of that agreement. And in year four, more of the facility is, is subject to taxation, and less to exemption. So, so that's, that's a large one. And also, the Chinese Railway ownership built their own warehouse on the site. So that's, those are two major ones. I mentioned earlier the utilities, electric and gas, they're very large investments. And in the personal property sector alone, we've got 80 million of new valuable, new value. So, and I think we're all aware of many new houses around the city, new single families, new duplexes around the city. So, you know, all of those items, which, whether they're houses or, you know, gas lines, all of those qualify as new growth. And we have to document those very precisely for the Department of Revenue in order for them to be satisfied and approve it.
Thank you, Richie. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Mr. Lopez.
Yeah, Richie, could you tell us, you said you take last year's levy amount, and then you add 2.5% before adding new growth. Who set that 2.5%? Is that something that the city sets, or is it something that the state requires? Or how does that math equation come to place?
Sure. So in 1980, the voters in Massachusetts on the ballot adopted Proposition 2.5 relating to property tax levy increases from year to year. So that was really a, a major fundamental change in how property taxes were handled in Massachusetts. Prior to that, there had been no annual cap, there had been no limit. And so this, this group called Citizens for Limited Taxation organized and got the question on the ballot, and essentially it created the levy ceiling concept, and it created the levy limit. And in Springfield, for instance, we were actually above the 2.5% ceiling, and we had to, over a period of three years, reduce taxation to get back to being in compliance. And as, as the Act was implemented in the early 80s, that was common. And the, but the Department of Revenue became a very significant force in local government and, and the administration of property taxes. So every year, we have to be in compliance with the levy limit calculation. And what that simply means, Freddie, is that last year's levy limit, we get a 2.5% increase from that levy limit. And then we add new growth to that. And, and that's, that creates the current year's levy limit, as long as there isn't a clash or a collision with the levy ceiling. So does that answer your question?
It does, it does for the most part, but is that two, you said the 2.5 is automatic. Is that basically kind of like every, just an increase that automatically is going to be expected ongoing, that 2.5%?
Well, it's, it's the legal option for the city. And for the Department of Revenue to administer Proposition 2.5 and its enabling statute in, you know, 351 cities and towns. So yes, I mean, it really serves as a, as a cap. And, you know, the expenses of local government tend to rise at a faster rate than 2.5%. And that's why it's so important that we have state aid. And as you probably know, Springfield is top two in the state for being dependent upon the state for local aid. So our, our property tax levy typically is about 30, provides about 30% of our operating budget. Most communities, you know, the smaller suburban communities, it would be in excess of 70% of their budget. Gateway Cities, it's, it's a different story.
Thank you.
Thank you, Freddie. Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have a few questions, but for now, just relative to what you had mentioned, Mr. Chairman, is the TIFs that are granted, for example, I know the Big Y Warehouse also received a TIF, you mentioned CRRC, as more of the value becomes taxable via the TIF, is that counted into the new growth each year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So in the case of CRRC, their first three years were at a 50% exemption. Year four, which is what we're in now, is 35% exemption.
So we don't, we don't ever lose any of that value going forward. We just lose it in the beginning when we agree to make it exempt.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that is all the questions for now, Richie, so we could just move on.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead with the displaying the documents to give us more of an understanding of, of the impact in the, in the neighborhoods? Are you able to see the document? I am sharing it now.
Yes, we can see it.
Can we scroll, can we scroll that up a little? I'm sorry, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to. Okay, connect, is everyone seeing the document called FY21 Neighborhood Impact on Two Family Homes Without Physical Change?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to have one of these tables for two families, one for three families, and then single families, and then finally, commercial industrial. So what we wanted to do here is really demonstrate what's happening in each of the neighborhoods within these three residential classes. And, you know, in order to get DOR approval of our, of our valuations, we have to prove that we're reflecting the market. And so just, you know, that first chart of two-family homes, you're seeing 16 acres, we've got 102 family homes and 16 acres. Last year's median value of those 100 homes was $198,750. This year, those same 100 homes have a median value of $225,500. Now I want to stress that all of the parcels on these three tables are ones that are not, they haven't had any physical change. So they're not new growth in any way. They're buildings that have had what we call static. Their data has not changed from last year. So as you, you know, as you read down the list of neighborhoods, you can see the number of parcels in each neighborhood and what, what's happened to the median value and what it represents as a percent change. Any questions on two-family homes?
Yeah, Richie, could you make it a little bigger? Give the mic, please.
Patrick, are you able to do that?
Can you scroll down a little? I don't know.
Are you guys going to be sending these forward in the email to members?
Yes, yes, we will be this week. This was really just the first introduction of this data. And we want to get testimony tonight and any questions until we could address this better as the week unfolds. So any, any questions on the two-family homes?
Nope.
Okay.
You can keep.
So moving down to the three-family homes, the next chart. You know, just more of the same, same presentation. Again, these are houses that have not had any physical change sector. Okay. And again, we're just reflecting what's happening in the marketplace as of January 1st, 2020. So, so moving along to the single-family. So, moving along to the single-family homes, the one-family homes. So obviously, we've got over 25,000 single-family homes represented on this, on this table. And we're actually over 26,000 single-family homes in the city. But you can see again, you know, what's happening around the city. And, you know, where the level of increase in each neighborhood. Any questions on any of this data? I don't hear any. So I'll just move along finally to the commercial, industrial parcels without physical change. And this would represent the entire city. So over 1,600 commercial and industrial parcels. This is real estate. So the median value last year was just over 301,000. And this year, it's over 309,000. So, 3% change in the median value from last year to this year. So... Any questions?
No questions. I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. So why don't we move to the, what we call the options table or the rate sheet? Patrick, if you would. Okay, is everyone seeing that?
Chair, we can see it, it's just kind of small.
Barely, barely see it.
I'll try to expand it here. I'm not sure it'll help much, but let me know if it's helpful or not. Probably not there.
I think, I think we have to leave it at the one back so we can see all the data.
Can you, are you, can you see all of this now?
Yeah.
Okay. So the box in gray at the upper left portion of the, of the screen represents the current year. The box in blue towards the middle of the page or the screen is last year. And that long, narrow box goes across the top. Again, that's, that's last year. So, so the point is, you know, our total value is up from 8.7 billion to 9.4 billion. The residential represents 74.38% of the total value, which is up more than 1% from last year as the residential values have appreciated at a higher rate than commercial, industrial, and personal. So our levy limit is 228.5. And the levy ceiling, a 235.9. If there was a single tax rate, and I'm reading in the gray box towards the top left, there was a single tax rate, it would be $24.22. And the levy is up $12.1 million from last year. So, proceeding down the page, the, the table shows a number of options. So the council has a lot of latitude as to what can be adopted for tax rates. What we've done here, tried to fit it, tried to fit the relevant range on one page for tonight's presentation, is we've, we've started by showing last year's residential rate, that first yellow highlighted cell on the left side at the top of the, at the top of the grid. There's $19,053. If you read across, you see that that would result in a $37.82 commercial, industrial, personal rate this year. And you can see that that would be a shift of 1.56 onto commercial, industrial, personal. The, just keep reading across there. And you see the total levy, 228,503,000. It falls within the levy limit by 18,836. Results in a gap, the gap meaning the difference between the share, the commercial share of the value and the commercial share of the levy. And that 1953 rate, that was last year's rate, if that were used this year, the average single family, which is, you see that 172,900 number, that 172.9 would experience a tax increase of $232. So each line should be read in its entirety.
I don't see 172.9.
Okay, so it's a, it's in, in a box above the column called Gap and the column called Average Tax Increase. Do you see that, towards the right side, the extreme right side?
Yeah. But where's 172.9?
It's average, AVG 101. 101 is a single-family home in the...
Oh, oh, yeah, at the top.
172.9, last year's average was 161 even. So, we're trying to give you a comparison of what's happening last year or this year at each of these various tax rate options.
So the average 101 went up because the values increased?
Value increased, yes. So if you kept last year's rate, residential rate in 1953, because of the value increases of 160, on an average of 161 to 172.9, the tax bill increases $232. This is kind of an over-generalization, you know, representing over 26,000 single families. But we're trying to, you know, capture a lot of data in these statistics. So, so that was that first highlighted cell, 1953. The second line, reading back to the left column now, FY20 shift. If you use the same shift as last year, 1.5829, you read across, we'd be at, you know, 1935 on the residential and 3832 on CIP. And that would result in a $201 increase on the average single family. Everybody with me? The third line is the FY20 gap. Again, the gap as defined as the difference between the commercial share of the value and the commercial share of the levy. And last year's gap was actually 15.54. We're showing 15.53 here. We've been testing, I should say, Patrick's been testing these, and it's, it's very tedious work. And there's a whole universe of options within what the council can do. And so he's, he's testing each line individually to make sure it's in compliance. And so 50, he hasn't found one evidently that works yet for 15.54, but roughly 15.53. It's a $168 increase on the average single family. Moving down a few lines, the 3923 highlighted cell, that represents the, the same tax rate per thousand that the commercial, industrial, and personal property experienced last year. So if we were to just understand what happens at 3923, the residential rate becomes $19.04. And reading across, the average single family would have an increase of $148. So those are four of the markers that we try to understand every year, from year to year. And just wanted to, you know, give a little more context. If you go further down the list, you'll see the widest historical gap in the left column. If you read across. So, we show 16.33. Actually, it was 16.34 back in fiscal 93. And at that gap, the average single family would, would increase $123. And that would give us a residential rate of 1890 and a commercial rate of 3965. And then finally, the highest shift historically, the second line from the bottom of the grid, 1.6419, that, if you're, results in a residential rate of 1886 and a commercial rate of 3976. And an increase to the average single family of $117. Certainly, there are rates below that. There are rates above the 1953, which is the top line here. But we tried to condense the grid to one page and to provide a range that we think is consistent with where we've been historically. And, but we are able to look at rates outside of this range if councils would like to do that. So, I realize it's a lot of data. This is a, the concepts alone can be difficult to absorb, particularly when you're dealing with them really just, you know, for a one or two-week period every year. But, you know, we're, we're trying to provide you with the data that we think is relevant and, and, you know, some indicators as to recent years so that maybe put it into a, into sharper focus for you. So, does anyone need me to explain anything further, clarify anything?
Yeah, can you just explain the CPI shift one more time?
Okay, so, the CIP shift, under the law, it can be shifted up to 1.75% of the single rate. So, what that means is that when, back in 1978, the voters of Massachusetts, going back to the referendum questions, they created the opportunity for cities and towns to save homeowners and to shift taxation onto the business community. So if, if every property in Springfield were at the same tax rate up in that gray box, you see the single rate of $24.22. So in Springfield, since the implementation of classification in 1983, we've never been at the same single rate for all classes. It's always been some degree of shift onto commercial, industrial, and personal. So that's, that's just a measure of how much is being shifted from, you know, from the residential class over to the commercial class essentially, and paid for by the commercial class. Okay. 1.75 is the maximum. There are a lot of communities that, that are at the 1.75. You know, there's about 100 communities in Massachusetts out of the 351 that classify. Most don't classify, but cities typically do in some, some bedroom communities, et cetera. And a lot of them are at 175. But, you know, we've, Springfield's historically been in the 150s and low to mid 160s.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't see any hands. Does anyone have any questions? Oh, I do see hands, I'm sorry. I didn't scroll up. I didn't see who was first, guys, because the screen is like very crazy. So I'm gonna give our guests the first questions, because I haven't heard from Nancy as well. So Nancy, can you please ask your question?
Thank you, Madam Chair and woman. Just to clarify, so I am clear, I think I ask this question every year. We kept the gap the same. That actually shifts more of the tax burden onto the commercial, industrial property.
So the gap meaning the 15.54 that was in effect last year?
Correct.
Yes. So that would result in a, in a shift of 1.6058? That third line in, in the grid, if you will?
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, Nancy?
No.
Counselor Letterman? Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I have two questions. The first is probably best answered by the Chairman of the Board of Assessors. The other might be more in the finance realm. But Chairman Allen, so I don't think this necessarily applies to this year because we're using values that were taken January 1, 2020 into account. But I have some concern about the path we're headed down next year. As you mentioned, right, real estate values are, are very high right now, sort of across the board. But that's really as a result of not a lot of homes on the market, which is partially or probably very likely due to the pandemic. And so my question is, if for next year, we have a situation where values are very, very high on January 1, 2021, and we go to do this process a year from now, and the pandemic has subsided or is on the end of subsiding, and the market is very different, but we're still facing sort of an economic recovery. What, what do you think about that? And how do you think the decision that we make this year will have any bearing on the decision we need to make next year in that regard?
Thank you for the question. That's a, that's a great question. We've had some discussions internally about, you know, what the marketplace will be like on 1121, which would be the basis for determining value for this discussion to take place a year from now. The, the residential market, it's just been torrid. It's, it's far exceeded certainly my expectations. And I think the conventional wisdom was that, you know, the pandemic was gonna have an impact on, on, you know, buyers not being able to qualify for mortgages and, you know, with unemployment so, so much higher. And, and it was just gonna have a, you know, a detrimental effect on property value. That hasn't happened. But as someone who's been doing this work a long time, I'm reminded that the real estate market works in cycles. And there will come a time, you know, might start a year from now or two years from now. I can't predict when we'll start to head down again. And on residential pricing, that is... You know, so as, as the mortgage rates, which are the lowest in my lifetime, as those start to rise, you know, maybe two, three years from now. I mean, the Federal Reserve has indicated it's going to be a very stable rate environment for, I think, till '22 or '23 even, I forget. So I, I think, you know, that the, it's a very uncertain future. I've just been talking about residential, but we've had discussions internally about what could happen in the commercial and industrial sectors. The, you know, I've been happy to tout the Big Y expansion and the CRRC. And, you know, there are a few other instances. We've got a new medical office building at Caro and Dwight. You know, we've got a few other newer buildings around Springfield. But I think it's it's clear that there's going to be an impact, this working from home trend. And in the way people have gotten comfortable with it and companies have, in order to adapt and to function and thrive, they I think the trend is going to be in favor of, of, you know, maybe three days in the office, two days at home or or or, you know, various modifications of that. And so as that happens, the office sector is going to be even more depressed. Our Class B and Class C in Springfield is really struggling. And, you know, there's just been tremendous vacancy in the offices other than the, you know, the Class A buildings, you know, Tower Square, Monarch Place, the Mass Lab Building and Center Square. Outside of those buildings, there's there's a lot of vacancy and rates level or heading down in some instances. And I think we all know about what's happening in the retail world that, you know, Eastfield Mall used to be in the 20 million, 30 million range, you know, during during my tenure. It's a far cry from that now. And, you know, so as people shop online, what what benefits from that is is the warehousing. But the discretionary money for retail, for travel, you know, in the hotels and restaurants, those categories are really suffering, and I'm worried about what the future portends for them. So I guess I'm just kind of giving a rambling answer here, but I don't really know the answer.
Yeah, no, I understand. It's a complicated. It's a complicated thing to consider. And I'll hold my next question because I know there's others with their hands up. But just as we as we think about this year, I would just encourage us all to be sort of cognizant and careful in considering really the next three years, sort of as the assessor mentioned. Because I think we want to make sure that, you know, we're meeting our budgetary needs, but that we're also remaining consistent in a way and not setting ourselves up to have a sort of drastic fluctuation. And also taking into account the fact that, you know, we're going to be in a position where I think at some point home values are are up, but, you know, income is down. And so we need to understand that when we're when we're moving forward with these conversations. So we can explore it more, but I just think it's a unique situation driven by the pandemic, and we need to be very careful with how we handle it.
Thank you, Councilman Letterman.
Well stated.
Thank you very much. I did say our guest, we're going to go first, so Counselor Davila, if you would indulge and let Freddie go first.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Question. So based on the city budget, when you say it's a city budget, is that strictly operational cost that you're basing 2.5 annual increase? Or does that go to cover other expenses? For example, this year we went up $12.1 million. You said the levy went up $12.1 million. So does it cost $12.1 million more dollars this year to run the city than it did last year?
So I'm going to defer on the budgetary questions to TJ and Lindsay and Tim. TJ?
Thanks, Freddie. Thanks for the question. So as of right now, we're still trying to figure out. So we passed a budget back in June for fiscal 2021. And we made a lot of assumptions back at that time based upon what we did or didn't know. The states still have finalized their budget as of now. We assumed a reduction in state aid. That reduction did not come to fruition. They level funded us this fiscal year and understrated general government aid, which is good news for the city. But a conversation that we're going to need to have in the next week or so, similar to what Council Letterman was talking about, is what do we need to look at for the next three years? Because I'm guessing the way the state has level funded us for FY21 to hold us harmless, I'm fearful that FY22 and FY23 are going to really be tough fiscal years for us. We've done a pretty good job managing through the pandemic. By that, I mean, we've spent, including the grants, about $15 million. We've deficit spent just over $7 million. We've lost $6.9 million in revenue since the pandemic started. So we have a lot of things moving, a lot of moving pieces to this budget and to this puzzle that I think we just really had to have an honest dialogue of what makes sense, that's fair to our taxpayers, and that's also makes sense for the city in the long term. I don't know if that answers your question, Freddie.
It does. I'm just, I guess I'm just wondering, um, let's say pandemics, we didn't, we didn't see a pandemic coming, but, um, so we would have still collected an extra $12.1 million, which I'm just, I guess, do we ever get to the point that the city budget absorbed that much money?
You repeat? I missed. You cut out the last part.
Do we ever get to the point we don't have an increase? And I guess this is more of a real, it's a budget committee. But that we can't absorb, let's say, a $2.1 million addition to our operating budget.
So that's actually an excellent question in the sense of there's always more things. I mean, the operational budget does not, it goes up way beyond the 2.5% a lot by the levy limit and the levy ceiling. And that's really what we were running into because our pension alone is going up 9% to 14%, depending on the year. Health insurance goes up between, you know, 3% to 5%. And all those things continue to outgrow the the revenue. We're highly reliant on state aid. You know, we're 60% plus funded by the state, and so we don't control a lot of our future. The one little bit that we do control is the property taxes. And the challenge that we're having is exactly what you're saying is how much do we need to raise in revenue to set ourselves up to be fiscally responsible, but also to be fair to the taxpayers? And the short answer is, I think everyone would want to spend more. If you ask any department, had they didn't get enough this year, that they'd want to expand services if they could. We're just trying to be that delicate balancing act.
Was that a fair enough answer for you, Freddie?
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Chairwoman. Richie, I thank you for that presentation. I thought you did an excellent job with the constraints of Zoom and of the pandemic. So my my kudos to you for a good good presentation. I do have some quick questions, if I may. I see here, I know it's kind of difficult to read, but they do a very good job of explaining what the average tax, especially if you could, let me go back real quick. The average tax increase will be for the residential. And it goes by increment according to what the residential factor is. Do we have anything to compare that to the business side? I know it's kind of what you can fit in the grid, but.
Well, certainly, we can provide that. You know, the the business side, the value increases are at a lower percentage, you know, about 3%. And, you know, going back to the earlier tables on residential, you know, those value increases, you know, mid to high single digits and several across the three classes into double digits. So but, you know, businesses, it's it's just a harder comparison. Certainly, we can we can provide that. We've been looking at that, but, I mean, you know, it can vary greatly from from, say, medical office to retail to, you know, to downtown offices. It's but we're happy to provide that. Certainly, we got the data.
And just to be clear, you're going to be forwarding all this presentation to us, correct?
Sure. So we'll we'll provide that.
Thank you. Now, Richie, just to be clear, because I think we have a tough choices ahead of us. The FY20 residential tax rate is 1953 and the CIP is 3923. Where on this table do we do you start the recommendations for the 21?
Well, we don't have a recommendation as yet, councillor. This committee process and, you know, public comments and so forth this week will, advance the process of forming a recommendation. We do not have one as yet.
So would that be, would that be, Richie, so there's a clear what I'm reading here. Reading on the left hand side, the very 1953 says FY20 residential rate. That's a current rate right now. And then next to it, you have 3782 for the CIP. Why why the difference? Why is the residential the same and not the business?
Oh, this is just for illustration purposes. If we were to take last year's rate, that that's the idea, the 1953 is just replicating last year's residential rate. If we were to use that with the fiscal 21 valuations and levy and and the fiscal 21 numbers, the consequence of that is a CIP rate of 3782. That's all that we're trying to illustrate here. Okay. Yeah, this is all really just for your education and illustration. We're not, I, you know, granted, we made a decision as to what the range would be because we thought that would be most useful. But the there are rates above the 1953 and rates below the 1878. We just want to provide a range this evening for discussion and just to be consistent with recent years.
Now, if I may, my last question.
I have my Counselor Williams wants to get some questions in, and I want to be respectful of everyone's time. So can you please be the last?
Yeah, absolutely. My final question. Thank you, Chairwoman. Question for anybody in the administration, TJ or Lindsay. Kind of what Counselor Letterman was alluding before, we have a certain financial outcast in front of us. Is there any plans or any talk as to what do we do if we fall short of the tax collections? What do we, you know, what? What are some of the remedies that we may have so that we can also give the taxpayers, the home payers in particular, some sort of a break or slash break during the possible difficult times? I know it's kind of a loaded question, but I just feel like I need to ask that question.
So counsel, that's a good question in the sense that the mayor hasn't made a recommendation yet. That'll probably be coming sometime this week. As we're going through all this, the same is the council's doing their due diligence and this committee is doing their due diligence. I don't know if we're ready to make a decision where we're at with that. I just think what needs to happen is we need to have more conversations with the council and this committee and others just to kind of really get a sense of what makes the proper fiscal sense and what makes the most sense for the organization. So I would, I'm meeting with the mayor, Richie and I and the board are meeting with the mayor tomorrow morning to go through it again. And we're just not there. We're just like, you know, information overload. We're trying to figure out the same way everyone else on this Zoom is, so. But I know what you're asking. And I mean, we're not going to fall short because we don't fall short in tax collections because we have procedures in place to collect it in that sense, but I know you guys might be looking as a council for some some relief, and I think that's what we got to try to figure out what makes sense.
All right, thank you, TJ.
Thank you, TJ. Thank you, Counselor Davila. And I know Counselor Williams has a question, but I just wanted to clarify something that Nancy asked. She asked Richie if the gap remained the same. So if I'm looking at the gap of 1553 because it's highlighted in yellow in the far right, that's the gap currently for FY21, correct?
We do not have a gap for 21. So last year's gap.
Okay, I'm sorry, FY20.
Last year's gap was 1554, actually.
Okay, 54. Okay, close to that 53. And then she asked, would the ship, would the residential and and the CPI rates, would it be more on the CIP, the commercial property? But when I look at the numbers, it says 1916 for residential and 3889 for commercial. That's still lower than the 3923 that they paid this year.
Right, right. The rate's lower, but but the the value in the in the CIP side of the question is proportionately lower. There's been a, you know, some erosion of the value. Last year, CIP was 26.67% of the value. This year, it's 25.62. So so there's some erosion there, yeah. Recently residential, yeah.
Gotcha. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. My comments are, first off, I'll say, I think for a lot of councillors, this is probably one of our least favorite processes embarking on, no, no slight to you, Richie, but
Yeah, yeah.
putting a burden on the the business owners or residents, which is always a tough deal. So my first question is, bearing in mind, Richie, I believe you had said there are 25,000 single-family homes in the city of Springfield. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe 16 acres in Pine Point make up around 10,000 or 11,000 of that number. And of course, those are the constituents that I represent. So in meeting with the mayor TJ, this is just more of a comment. Please, you know, I would just think it's incumbent on on the mayor and his administration to work diligently to reduce the burden on homeowner owners because they really have not received a break in quite some time. And I know that a lot of the shareholder comes from the folks, again, that I represent in those two communities especially because that's the highest concentration of single-family homes. So I just wanted to put that out there. But also, we'll ask too, at what point, in terms of the new growth, when, you know, new construction, I know, for example, in Bay Street and Pine Point, there's single-family homes being put up with a high price value. So what at what point is that considered new growth?
The first year that they're taxed. So a lot of those houses on a lane circle are being taxed for the first time in fiscal 21. You got a lane circle. You've got some new houses on Barrington off of Parker Street.
Yeah.
So those are a part of the new growth list, if you will, for fiscal 21. Yeah, right.
Okay. And let me just, as a follow up, because to Counsel Letterman's point, earlier point around kind of just stagnant wages, which of course, I mean, there's folks are not getting paid more, but yet everything seems to be rising around them. Are there going to be any additional services outside of abatements or whatever programs for seniors especially that they can perhaps tap into?
So, yeah, let me address that. So just in general, I want to make it clear that while we're always talking about increases in the last couple of years on the homeowners, Springfield's taxes, the average single-family tax in terms of its ranking statewide, 351 cities and towns, we are always in the bottom 10%. Typically, in the bottom 6% of the average single-family bill statewide. So that's just one important fact I wanted to, you know, we're the lowest in Hamden County. You know, there are some small towns up in Franklin County and Berkshire County that are lower than us, and they don't have services. You know, the town hall might be open two afternoons a week. So that's just, in general, the average single family in Springfield is the lowest in the state of any kind of comparable city. Senior citizens in particular, and I'm glad you asked the question, Counsel Williams. In Massachusetts, we have what's called the circuit breaker. And the circuit breaker is meant to provide relief to qualifying households. To qualifying households. Over the age of, you know, 65 or over. And that qualify on income and qualify on value. And it's been around for about 20 years or so in Massachusetts. And it's really meant to. Provide savings through the state income tax system, personal income tax system. To those homeowners who may not have. Any mortgage, but they're, they're living on social security or a small pension. May not have, you know, much in the way of savings. But they, you know, they want to stay in their home and remain in their home. And, and, and so in Springfield, it's, it's set statewide. You know, by income qualifications, you know, I'm going to say that the vast majority of households in Springfield. With people 65 or over would qualify on income, would qualify on value. And. And essentially, if your. Property taxes and your water and sewer. Exceed a fixed percentage of your annual income. Then that relief comes back to you from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So. The most recent year that I have, for which I have information, I, I was talking to the revenue department last week about this. The most recent year that they've got complete information is, is for calendar 18. So. Income tax returns that were filed. A year ago, April, you know, April of 2019. So. State, statewide. Well, I'll just boil down to Springfield. There were, there were about 4 million filers statewide. There were 67,000 personal income tax returns and filed from, from Springfield households. For calendar 18. 1,488 of those Springfield households. Received the. Circuit break, or relief under the circuit breaker. And. It's, you know, it's very significant. A lot of people weren't filing their annual income tax returns. But they have to file it to, to get this relief. And. It's, you know, it's several hundred dollars for most people. I'm going to see if I can get you the. The exact number, the average for Springfield, just bear with me. But, you know, it's about 1,500 households. Was it, it was a million. 203,000 dollars. That came back to households in the city of Springfield. So just bear with me. I'm going to do that math. So about $808 was the average. Check that came back to a household in Springfield that qualified for the circuit breaker. So that's above and beyond what we offer locally pursuant to. Programs established by state law that also take into consideration. Assets and income. You know, and we have $175 as one program and 500 as another. Those. The qualifications and the amounts are set by state law. The, and then there's also programs for veterans, programs, a program for, for blind. People and. So that relief is, you know, again, we had about 1,200, 1,300 households that qualified for relief under those programs. For fiscal 20. So, you know, we try to encourage people on that, on the circuit breaker. It's a, it doesn't cost the city of Springfield a dime. And it's a great benefit. You know, for households with people 65 or over. You know, about 1,500 households in Springfield. So. That's, that's my pitch.
Appreciate that. And we certainly miss your, your presentations to the community that Counselor Whitfield used to coordinate. Due to COVID, the, you know, of course, things that's changed some things this year, but. If I, you know, certainly, even if, you know, the, the press could, could play a more crucial role in kind of like, kind of, you know, just. Describing and detailing that information, just so the common folk can see and have access to it. I mean, I think. We all can play a role in that. So I appreciate you sharing that information.
Coordinate another one via Zoom and Facebook and all these other. Social media platforms.
I'm happy to be available in the evening or during the day for, for any kind of session that's, you know, that's safe and. That would be helpful to your, to your constituents.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. I just wanted to say, we have been on this Zoom for almost an hour and a half. And that's longer than we're usually on these meetings, but this is very important. I wanted to echo what my colleagues have said about finding relief for the. Single, you know, for the homeowners or residential without putting a burden onto the businesses. Like, we need to have a healthy balance and have to try to use some other revenue sources to lower the tax bill. Because while we have the lowest tax bill, our median income is also lower than other communities. That probably have a higher tax bill. And so we have to take all factors into consideration when we think about income. And like different communities, our surrounding communities too. And so, you know, seniors, I mean, when I seen what my mom makes as a senior, based on what she used to make, you know, it's. Considerable decrease and even, you know, 20, 30, 40 dollars each year of your tax bill going up is a burden. And so I hope you guys are going to have those type of conversations and really, really this year, take a look at how we can. You know, take away some of the burden on the residents and not transfer over to the business community. However, we need to get it done. So I hope that you really think about those conversations. But Richie, you did awesome job as always. Very thorough. Circuit breaker credit is very important. I do taxes, as you know, and so. A lot of seniors don't even know to file their taxes to get the circuit breaker credit, which the maximum they could got. Last year was $1,100. So that helps towards, you know, a tax bill. And so you guys spread the word on that. But I'm going to end this meeting here and I thank our. Committee members Freddie and, and Nancy and Michelle for joining us and. Any questions that you have, please feel free to email them to Richie, please CC, me and Adam. Or just send it to our staff. I'll get you guys the information. Send it to me. I'll give the information out to you, whatever questions you have. And we'll also make sure everyone gets their presentations.
Madam Chairman, I just offered some concluding information?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so what I want to emphasize, it's a very difficult decision for the council. And. There's a lot to consider. And it's a, you know, it's a very challenging economic climate of, you know, for a lot of people. So I, I. You know, we all need to be sensitive, sensitive to that. But I just wanted to mention that the calendar here. So. We are currently scheduled to have a vote on, on the residential factor, which sets the tax rates. That's to be scheduled for next Monday, December 7th. We would have a committee meeting that day of, to develop a recommendation for the full council, then a public hearing. Conducted by the city council, then a special meeting at which the vote of the residential factor would take place. So I just wanted to stress that. In order for us to stay on course with mailing tax bills and so forth, we need to be mindful of that, that date.
Yep. Okay. So with that last bit of information, we're going to have a busy Monday. I hope you all can make it next Monday. And we'll end the meeting here and I thank everybody for joining and participating.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.